Our phones on?
Yes.
Yes. Come on me in the left.
That's okay.
Yeah.
No, I just don't want DM or anything.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. In addition.
Seeing none, I just have to say that I wish God's blessing upon you as council members and staff and the community at large. So I hope you have a very merry Christmas and a wonderful new year.
So, public input? Amendments to the agenda?
Oh, it's still great. There we go. But, um, maybe a little more. I do want to thank, uh, it's been a wonderful Christmas season, St. Lucilla, Snowflake, uh, the Old Mill, thanks for going on there, and the Ad hoc Committee, and all the other things that are happening throughout our, um, throughout Linsburg and that. I think it's great to see people downtown, you know, talking yesterday, down, doing some looking around and shopping myself in stores that were open and that, and it's just a, it's good feeling, good things happening in Linsburg and that. And so, thank you to everybody that's involved in all of those areas, and again, Merry Christmas to the staff, the council, and the Linsburg citizens. Is there anything I've missed that needs to be brought forward at this time?
Great. Let's move on to the consent agenda. What is your desire?
Would be approved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Becky, yes, Sebel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Plating and zoning. No report, Gary says, old business, says none. So I'm moving on to number nine, new business, 9A Cereal Mall, beverage licenses. How do you wish to handle these? What is your desire? Jerry?
I need to make an amendment on those that have requested, um, their renewal. The Brickhouse Royal did not get their application, renewal application turned in, so you're really only considering CAPS, Casey's General Store, and the Pizza Hut.
What is your desire on this, Rick?
Would be approved.
Second. Been moved in second to approve CAPS, Casey's General Store, and Pizza Hut. Any further discussion?
What does the other business have to do, wait 30 days?
Uh, no, if they want to re, uh, they will only be able to sell cereal mall beverage now until the end of the year, and once January 1st hits, they will not be able to sell until they have, or unless they have renewed their license. And the next opportunity you guys will have to approve that license is January 4th at your first meeting.
Okay, thank you. Does that take effect immediately then, or is there...
Does that take effect immediately?
As soon as it's approved by the council.
Okay. All right. Good question, any further discussion? Jerry, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Next item is for some publications.
I'd like to do a proposal tonight to place two ads in the 2016 spring issue of AAA Travel Magazine. This is a magazine that we have as a community, as entities in the community have put ads in before, and have had really nice response from it. We have not been able to afford this as a CDP, they're very expensive ads, but we do have money in our budget this year enough to cover those ads for 2016. So I'm asking that we would place that expenditure from this year on extra ads. And the two issues that I would like to put these ads in, one is Home and Away in Oklahoma, and the other one's in Compass, Colorado. Currently, this year, we put ads in the Missouri Life Magazine, and we've had a very enough return from this ad. We put two ads in, was our third ad to go in, in the Sia Festival in the early spring. We would like to continue to expand that territory outside of our state that we're marketing to, into Colorado, Oklahoma, in 2016. And so this would be in line with that marketing plan that we have been looking at for the next year. From the information that I gave you, I looked at this and felt like it was important that we at least do a quarter page ad and not the eighth page ad, it's very small, and I felt like we wanted to do something that was more noticeable. It is more expensive, it's about twice the cost. Um, Home and Away in Oklahoma is a $971 ad for one issue, in Compass, Colorado is $2,326 for one issue. This magazine comes out twice in the year, and so again, I would like to do the spring issue that fits before a lot of our travel goes on in the remainder of the year. This is a magazine that people do hang on to because it has a lot of good information and has coupons and things like that that people utilize throughout the year. Home and Away in Oklahoma has a circulation of 226,000 readers, in Compass, Colorado is 360,000. So I feel like they do fit a good, a good number of people. This is an offer that is available to us, and if you're in partnership with the Kansas Parks and Tourism, we would not be able to purchase this ad at this price without them on our own, it would be a higher cost. They contract throughout the year using Jim Hewitt Partners, which is the marketing agency and ad agency for the Department of Wildland Parks and Tourism. Jim Hewitt Partners goes in and negotiates their ad costs, and so we're able to partner and place several ads from the state of Kansas in one area, so we have a little bit nicer look throughout the magazines we do now. We're never guaranteed that people take advantage of it, most likely the ads that we're going with this are going to be someone from Kansas City, probably Manhattan, probably Topeka, Wichita, tops, and the bigger communities. It's very unusual that a smaller community does this. And we do know from the statistics that we were given that there's a nice variety of age range for the individuals that are looking at this magazine. Twenty-five percent of their readership is 18 to 34 years of age, 28% is 35 to 49 years of age, 27% is 50 to 64 years old, and 20% is 65 years and up. Mostly leisure travelers, 72% of our readers are leisure travelers, which is what we're looking at for our market. We also know that the type of hotels that they're looking at are upscale, 21%, which we could probably do with our, a couple of our lodging establishments, and the highest range is 31% that's looking at modern lodging. So none of these are things that are outside of what we're looking at for the type of tours that we want to attract. Any questions?
Yeah, Holly, the, so you're looking at, um, around, around $3,300?
Yes.
For exposures to circulation of over a half million. Is that once or twice?
It's one time, two different magazines, one in Oklahoma, one in Colorado.
Both the spring and winter issue then?
Just spring.
Oh, just of spring, okay.
Okay. I felt like particularly since this was not a home and stuff year, that we had that live just coming with the spring magazine and not utilizing the fall issue, that was just the only other one, just in, I felt like we were four to six.
Holly, your advertising expertise, is there any way to draw knowledge after the fact of what actual readership has brought to us? I know in our industry, we use some different call-in numbers and things like that, that if they, everybody likes it as a calling, but is there a Google number or a Google something that they would allow us for you to know what your return possibly would be from an ad like this in the future?
We used to be able to, until about a year and a half ago, probably. We, so I can tell when people are coming to our pages, but I can't track them, they used to be able to. They had set up a separate login for us, through a totally different third-party program that would show what we were doing on every page, so I could tell what people were looking at on the website. I can no longer do that, and they would charge us additional fees to set that up again.
But to try and what Bill is, is asking, is there a way, you have a, you have a Google ad contractor agreement now, is there any way to have Google focus ads in those places with a, you know, you can have them, they assign a number, you can call 888-123456, and when somebody calls, there's a brief message that says this is a Google response, and then the other person says hello. So it reaches you, they've got us a different number, and then you could see what kind of a return.
I would have to check into the cost of that, that's something I'm not aware of, and that's probably something you could provide more information with this kind of line, that is to do.
Might be worth checking into here.
AAA, you used to have travel guides for each of the states. If we were to take a vacation to Illinois or whatever, you could get a travel guide and a map. Do we do anything in those publications?
No, you can. Midwest Traveler hit Illinois, Missouri, and Indiana, and it was about $2,618 for a quarter page ad. We, this is just, from my understanding, these, they consolidate portions of the United States, and we're allowed to buy that portion, we're not allowed to buy per state.
No, but the, it'd be a Kansas, the Kansas's travel guide, where, what I was referring to, that other people from out of state would acquire the Kansas travel guide, and are we covered in that?
A map, oh yes, we always put an ad in there every year. We actually partnered with my first in this year, it had about $150 of our cost every ad. They sent me their ad, and I put them together, but it wasn't one ad, and they dealt us one time, so we just split the cost.
Additional questions, Holly? What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
The amount, approve what?
Um, I'm sorry, approve the proposed quarter page ads in the Oklahoma Home and Away, and the Compass, Colorado, spring issue, quarter page ads for $971 plus $2,326.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, is there any additional discussion on this ad placement?
And Holly, we design the ad every day, I would define it.
Great. Roll call, please.
Eddie, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Item passed. We'll go to item C, Boneyard Bar.
Is that song or something?
I'll make the motion to approve the resi...
I will.
Sorry. I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of 400 tons of road rock from E&amp;M Sand and Gravel at a cost of $22.70 a ton, for a total of $9,080.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dunn, is that to the podium about?
I have some questions. And that road then, uh, from Harrison Coal out to the Boneyard, is a city road?
Yeah, it's.
Not a county road?
No. It's actually owned, it's...
It is not a true road in the sense of the word.
Okay.
It's actually owned property, it's not a dedicated rightway, it's not an easement, it is property that the city owns to get there.
Okay.
And it serves the premises.
Okay, that's fine. And then, this, this would do that old road, plus laymore at the Boneyard. Is that what I mean, I can't quite get that.
Well, I think the, uh, first portion of the road is in pretty good shape, I went from where that fence starts, about halfway down, from there on into the Boneyard, and through the road back behind the, two behind the, we, it's really, with that last two rings, we're really...
Yeah, you're right.
Internet rock, again, but this is really a base rock. I mean, that's a big stuff.
Yeah, that's just like, they're 83, which is, it's the same stuff we've done before.
Okay.
You know, I don't remember if we've stamped a lot, it's really heavy, it's kind of...
No sharp edges, and all that we had before?
No, 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 no battles.
So is it 83 that after a while, one of the, one of the rings on it is set up by 83 the...
It's the same stuff.
Yes, that's a bigger, yeah.
Here for a while, we were having a lot of people dump, for druthers and whatever else out there, is that kind of...
Kind of slow down, like, it gets bad and strange.
Okay.
Do we have any kind of trail camera or something that can cut that out there?
No, I'm sure there is, but I think they pretty well use them now.
The answer is yes, it's, it's video all the time, so be aware.
Yeah.
You're asking the wrong Sam, Sam didn't realize that we have video now.
Not by the department, we need to find... Well, if it becomes a problem, you should definitely...
Well, we have our spies, we, not that we can catch.
Can we have a yearly agreement, whatever it is, that we can agree about being able to have that rent here?
Well, it is our property, if you're referring to, uh, the composting and the burning and all, yes, we, we have a very little K&amp;E and, uh, we're, we renew yearly, I submit lease for that property, I submit paperwork, and we have, early in summer, and then, we also have the, uh, little tree farm, permit, but, uh, we're, we'll probably be talking to you about dropping that, because we don't normally do it, and I'm tired of doing paperwork for that.
Just to confirm that, uh, E&amp;M quote was a little bit correct. Correct.
Any additional Boneyard rock questions?
When would you do it?
Well, we have time rest week, so, next week, we, probably, soon.
Soon, okay.
They spread it, and do you, they drop it, and you spread it with the raiders and... Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Becky, yes, Sebel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Item passed. Let's go to new business D, Resolution 08-15, EMS Building.
Uh, one of the requirements for constructing a new EMS building is authorizing the construction of the facility, and then providing for the payment and related costs. Uh, that's what this, uh, resolution does. And the public building, it needs to be authorized, it doesn't necessarily say being built tomorrow, but at least moves the process forward.
Okay. What is your desire?
Would be approved, Resolution Number 08-15.
Second.
Been moved in second, Resolution 08-15, EMS Building, any further discussion?
Does anybody have a question? Based on your comment, Greg, that it doesn't say we're building tomorrow, but it puts, uh, puts things in motion, so does this have a life? I mean, does it...
Run out of it.
I was thinking of a Ross McHale response. Because it does have a life, but it just goes on and on and on. But I think you're referring more to a construction type rate of start and completion. You know, I can narrow it down as, as much as, it'll happen during 2016, and it should be completed by the end of 2016. I have no idea how long it's going to take Rural Development to review everything. It's kind of caught in a bureaucratic quack, quack, mire right now, that's just the nature of Rural Development. So, all of those things on the front end are not happening as expeditiously as we would like, but it is moving forward.
Putting things in place.
Yes.
I think every project they do, I've been along with them, it was caught in that. Any further discussion on Resolution 08-15?
Quick question, trying to figure out, is the, uh, AI document B101, is that part of this resolution, or...
Oh, that's, that's the next one.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Um, Becky, yes, Ema?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Item carries, new business, item E, EMS Building Architectural Services Agreement, Cory, that's your pleasure.
Thank you, just a quick question.
What is your desire on this?
I'll make the motion, we approve the Architectural Services Agreement Form B101-2007.
Very good.
Is that good, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and this is part of that ongoing life that Greg talked about, with just, may Rural Development, uh, questions?
Would we approve in a draft, or would we approve in the final? You're approving. This draft would be the final agreement, both distributed, still has draft as a watermark. Um, I do have a copy of the agreement in here without the watermark.
Which is the same as...
Which is the exact same as what you're looking at with the watermark removed. We actually approved a, almost identical agreement when we started this project, but Rural Development requires that it be the 2007 version and not the 1997 version that was approved prior.
Wow, that come up in the...
Yeah, wow, very good.
Any additional discussion? Jerry, none?
I don't think you need to roll call for this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you very much. New business, item F, Workman's Compensation Insurance, Larry's making his way to the podium.
Okay, workers' comp insurance is something that we have to renew every year. It's, this is a quote through Knet. We have our insurance brokers that we run this through, so that they also, they look and make sure that we give the best possible work comp insurance, because the alternative is EMC. Knet has been the most cost-effective so far, and they've done a good job. The, uh, experience bond is a little bit higher than, than last year, but it's lower than two years ago. We're looking at, uh, an 8% discount, which means we're going to gold star rating. And we're looking at a quota of $38,669. So, any questions?
What is your desire before we go to questions?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
Do we actually get a gold star?
I could answer that. Do you think, Jerry? Yes, we do.
Yes, we did.
We have bronze one, we have silver one, and now we have a gold one.
Oh, boy.
It's a certificate issued to us.
It's also a trophy.
Yes. They're in my office, stop being off. So, um, and they, this figure is attracted to you obviously, and it's much less than EMC?
EMC. Well, additionally, it's a, it's a municipal insurance trust, it's a pool, where we, cities are banded together, because in work comp insurance, they like to balance all over the place. They'll buy your business on the front end, and a year or two later, jab it out. The, uh, pool works to manage costs by sharing the risk of, I'm not even sure how many Knet, I think there's 70 some, Kansas Municipal Insurance Trust members now.
And it grows every year.
And, uh, they are involved in a safety program with us that's helped us get, um, increase our savings. We've gone from, I think, at one time, a 3% savings, to where we're now, we're at 8%. So it's not just providing coverage, it's providing also some services to help manage and control our, um, work comp experience. What is the financial health of the pool, is it in pretty good shape? Very strong, it is very strong. Um, I can't tell you the exact, I'll take my head right now.
That's not much better than I was, because I was wondering if it was anything like that I was on.
It has nothing to do with the state of Kansas.
Okay.
It's a separate entity that was established as an offshoot of the lead-up Kansas municipalities, and now is completely separated, and is a standalone, um, insurance rule trust.
Governed by a board?
Yes.
Get selected by?
Um, member states.
What was the leader, Bernie?
Bernie Hain was one of the original.
I really was guessing, I bet it was Bernie Hain.
Well, he was, Bernie Hain was one of the financial services director.
Oh, that was a long...
I didn't hear it made up.
Larry, is this number 38,669, that's with 8% discount, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion, reference the Workman's Comp? Roll call, please.
Eddie, yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Item passed, we'll go to new business, uh, letter G, sales tax transfer.
Every year, I bring forth to you, uh, the amount that's collected to date for local sales tax. We have two components, a half percent sales tax, which has been used for capital improvements of the city, and also an additional 1% sales tax, uh, which is to be used for property tax relief, economic development, and infrastructure. Since we do not have the December numbers yet, I will be bringing this back to January to give you the full revenue totals, but right now, we have $517,146 for local sales tax collections of that amount, $344,764.62 is from the 1% sales tax. Out of that 1% sales tax, we have 4.5 million designated for property tax relief, which would be $98,424.81, $56,105.50 is applied towards the Sunstrom Conference Center bond, and $45,690 is used to pay for concrete, city parking lot, so, there's $334,000, and a little more to be used for our economic development, infrastructure. And then back to the half-sit sales tax, $172,382 can contribute to the local half-sit sales tax. I have a listing of capital outlay items, a total of $69,3256. We have budgeted $50,000 to be transferred to either capital improvement reserve fund or equipment reserve fund. I'm asking that 50,000 be approved to be transferred to the capital improvement reserve fund.
Does, does that take us, that doesn't take a separate motion, it just takes, uh, we're going to do anything with this, we have to wait until we find the numbers?
That's a good question. What do you want, what actually?
We need to approve this this year, because this is a 2015 budgeted item, so...
What exactly are you asking us to approve tonight?
$50,000 transfer.
That's the extent of what we need to approve for tonight?
Uh, it's been moved.
It's been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Moved in seconded to approve the $50,000 transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund?
Reserve Fund.
Reserve Fund, thank you. Discussion?
Totally sacred, I have a roll call, not...
I always tend to go that way in my statements. Any discussion on this? Jerry, none, roll call, please.
Becky, yes, Sebel?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Item passed.
Oh, part two?
Oh, part two.
Sunstrom Conference Center has been operating in a loss, uh, in 2015. I think things are starting to improve, so I think the loss has been dwindling year by year, and it's probably going to be a couple, three more years before it actually breaks even, but, uh, to cover the loss, I'd like authority to allocate a portion of the 1% sales tax to cover the, the deficit of the Sunstrom Conference Center operating, and that would just be a transfer within the general fund, so I can do that once I have the final numbers, just with your approval.
Does this mean we're giving you like a blank slate to move whatever you want to?
It, it will be the total amount of the deficit of the Sunstrom Conference Center, whatever that amounts to, and I won't know that until mid-January, because it's within the general fund, that there is no transfers out of the fund that need to be...
Didn't I see there was a, a number today here?
You know, on page two of the, the...
About $53,000 approximately?
There's around $53,000 right now, yes.
And so, at the end of the year, you would have that number rounded to the correct number, and make that transfer to what you're asking for?
Correct.
That authority.
And you say it's better, if that's the right word, this year than last year?
I think with the current management and and the way things are looking and and the number of events that are happening there that we're looking at as far as revenue and and the management expenditures. So we're on the right direction.
Did that answer my question?
I hope so.
Last year was X amount and this year it's X minus something.
I I won't know the total amount.
I know, but what was last year's transfer? Do you know off the top of your head, Larry?
Off the top of my head, I think, no. It was it was sixty some thousand, I think.
I will make motion to approve the transfer of.
It's just a reallocation of local one percent sales tax to cover the deficit.
What he said, reallocation of local sales tax.
It's a full yes.
Back to Eddie.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion?
I will just make note that I think the Sunstrom has done good things for our community with traffic that we see downtown. For the good things, the good feedback I hear from events or meetings that have done there, and I think that we are indeed on the right track.
I would agree. Further discussion? Reference this motion? Roll call please.
Eddie? Yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Motion carried. Is there a third?
No third.
No third. Moving on, new new business, item H, wage plan revision involving the CBB director. We're headed to a toward a new wage scale across the board and that, and we've done, looked at the areas again and feel we need to do a reclassification to more accurately reflect responsibility for the CBB director position. What is your desire?
Will we approve?
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion?
Well, we're we're revising this classification of positions for this one person and.
One position.
One position, thank you. Uh, really doesn't affect anyone else, does it? Doesn't lower someone else?
No, from his best standpoint, it's a reclassification position.
Yes, thank you.
Additional questions? Roll call please.
Becky, yes, you know?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes.
Item carries, new business, item I, cost of living, COLA allocation. Mr. Dumars, please. Or is he going to let say Dumars?
Annually, we look at the cost of living for or the consumer price index for the Midwest region to consider a cost of living allowance for all employees. For through November of this year, which is typically the one we use due to timing issues, uh, the for the Midwest region, it is down point two percent from one year ago. In actually recommending a one percent COLA, which is budgeted. Uh, the reason being is because the last time we fully funded a COLA in potential merit increases was in two thousand seven.
I move we approve this as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second and to approve a one percent COLA as budgeted for the discussion?
Just to clarify, which is seven doors. So leading up to this year and past, the CPI has been greater than what we've been able to step up, do you understand?
Well, we have in years past, yes. We have modified both the cap of the merit plan that we were under, the maximum eligible increase, along with capping the cost of living or the cost of living allowance. Some years we've eliminated one and allowed the other. Sometimes it was a combination of capping both of them. It was due to the economic times.
So the answer is yes, correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Just giving you ammunition you need on this.
Additional discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Eddie? Yes. Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evo?
Yes.
Becky?
Item carries, uh, moving on to item ten, executive session, none that I know of. Correct?
Uh, correct. Mr. Mayor, just after last week, last meeting, we talked about actually how free is whether we can stay in the executive session or come out. And I checked it out, reported to Greg, technically when we make a motion, go into executive session from now on, the motion should be that we go into executive session with so and so, and we will resume the open meeting at a particular time. So in other words, we don't have to stay in that room, but we can't start the regular meeting until.
At designated time. It's like ten minutes you answer that, isn't it?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate that, Bill. Item eleven, other?
I've got just a quick question or update. Uh, the recent three and a half inch rain or whatever we got brought to the forefront of the flooding potential and I'm just, I don't know if we just get that data where we're at as far as believing potential flooding in the northwest quadrant.
Plan we went with earlier in the year was to have the area perform on the time and restrict the place, uh, the colbers across colons and the address. Been working on it and they expect to be completed by the end of January, I think, maybe even sooner. So that was the plan on how to kind of go about it and council wants proceed with that for work and we'll we'll work on that here in the secretary general.
What about the trouble areas up in the big ditch or whatever that's called? The what do you call it?
Drainage control ditch west of town.
Yeah, is that? I know there's some growth and other items impeding the water flow that may or may not be causing it to reroute the the water flow away from the ditch. Is that on our agenda? Is that our responsibility? Is that the county's or who's responsible for that? And are we going to be able to do that?
We've talked about it. Um, we've looked at it.
I'm just saying, what part of the ditch are we talking about? That there's there's a large big area and then there's a funnel on the north end and all that, so before we were talking about the big area, that's clean and and that's why I just want to.
Well, there's there's one drainage or creek that flows into it. The tents and vegetation grow up. I'm not aware of any other locations besides that. And we have looked at it and one of the issues we have is trying to figure out how to get access to it, but looking at getting access to it to clear it out.
I think one area that deserves to be looked at is probably the slough that runs through, um, the let's see, that would be just north of Celine Street, right behind the school. There's a lot of growth in that piece of slough on that private piece of property. I was amazed at how high the water was in the slough, just to the south of our home. And I can't help but wonder if the growth that I witnessed there this summer was backing all that up because of this, that slough came pretty close to the street. Just. That was. I don't know if anybody could serve.
I didn't hear a word.
The slough just south of where Rio was very high. It came.
It came close to the street.
Like Carlson Park.
So Carlson Park, thank you. And, um, the slough or the creek as it runs on that private piece of property just immediately behind the elementary school, just north of Celine Street.
Case spares.
Yeah. That had probably some six to eight foot weed growth in it this summer. So if it just, you know, fell down with a frost, it was likely to really slow the water flow down there. Might take some.
Let me take a look at that and if so, we can.
Going back to Greg's, your explanation of some growth from a creek area, is that probably?
Well, the tri-borough, it's at the mouth of where it feeds into the drainage channel.
Okay. And that's where it's tapering down? Have we looked at that?
It's more towards the north end.
More into that, okay.
Yes.
Still, at the height of that rain and so on, I drove all around and and I thought things looked like it was handling the water reasonably well. That's my impression.
The normal colbers on normal drive or whatever were, I've seen them a lot worse. I was.
Yeah, it's true, yeah.
After the flood, there were rains and stuff and and the area, the wide, not very deep ditch was running to the north and where it hits property and there's property in the tree line, that has to be, but it was still moving.
No matter what we do, we still will have some people who have worries about it and others who have their own plan of how this could be easily taken care of, but I think it's going pretty well.
Do we get the report, Tim, indicate what the expectation is and potential cost of the project? Is that what we're actually getting?
Should, no, engineers.
What we can just take care of and what the engineers cost us, gating project might be?
Yes, it should be designed and we can take that with it.
Okay.
You know, going back to that original flood study, there were several steps that were listed in that study that, um, would help alleviate, would never totally eliminate any opportunity for flooding because there's no way that you can get to that level. I mean, New Orleans is a prime example. They thought they were safe and, you know, it's kind of hard to believe when you're already below sea level. But, uh, you cannot eliminate any chance flooding, but that study did show that there are incremental steps we can take. I think it was five or six that were listed. The total cost was about two and a half million dollars and the decision made at the time of receiving that study was to take a step at a time. Each will build upon the next to provide better control. But from a cost standpoint, it's almost prohibitive. We sought grants. Unfortunately, through hazard mitigation grants, there's a couple of issues. One is we don't have repetitive loss properties, meaning properties have been damaged more than one time. Two, under the, is it the regional plan or the county plan area?
Regional.
Regional hazard mitigation plan, flooding is not, I mean, you have to categorize and prioritize what are the greatest likelihood of happening. It's not one of the top ones. In Kansas, typically you will see most of your dollars going towards tornadoes prevention, storm shelters, those type of things, and rarely is there much money, if any, left after addressing those issues.
Additional others?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.